Welcome to the City Council meeting. Please take a moment and silence your cell phones, and then please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we do not have any proclamations. Do I have any questions, comments, or a motion to adopt the consent agenda? Removing items F1 and 2 from consideration.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of items F1 and F2.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda? I don't know. Would you? Yes, okay. Would it be you? Use the little mic. This is just a... Oh, you were just going for the overhead. Okay.
Okay. My name is Mike Sewell. I'm Executive Director of Asheville on Bikes. Our mission is to cultivate the culture of urban and community riding through advocacy and celebration. And I'm here before you tonight to talk about, on the consent agenda, the Riverside Railroad Crossing. As you can see here, this is basically what breaks cycling down. And a lot of our work is focused on the interested but concerned. We actually... A lot of our advocacy work is getting people on bikes. What is currently being proposed at Riverside is complex. Heading south, it's 50% safe. We have 50% of what we need to move people through the city safe. Headed into the River Arts District, headed... Or, excuse me, headed north is an unsafe condition. What the design plan calls for is cyclists to make a maneuver to leave a bicycle lane...
Just, you can have an assistant.
To leave a bicycle lane, ride to the center lane, and then ride back to make that crossing. Let me give you a context of what it's like to cross those tracks. Raise your hand if you want to ride to the center of the lane and then cut back with a tractor-trailer behind you. How about a tractor-trailer behind you in oncoming traffic in front of you? When we talk about cultivating the culture of riding, we talk about opening cycling up to people who are not on bikes. In the River Arts District, you're building the Radtip, which is a great project, and you have the Blue Way, which is coming. You have a Greenway and active transportation facilities on one side of the tracks, and you have active transportation on the other side of the tracks. You're asking the most vulnerable users to make the most dangerous maneuver. We don't want to stop at we, as Asheville on Bikes, this project moving forward as currently designed, because 50% safe is better than 0% safe. But what we're asking council to understand is that this is a safety-third approach, and the work must continue in the River Arts District to make this crossing safe for all people moving by a variety of modes.
So you're asking... You're not saying, "Don't do what you've got on your consent agenda tonight, but you need to build on this to make this crossing more safe than this will make it."
That is correct. And I do want to be on record to compliment city staff. They have reached out to me. We have worked. We have spoken together. We have traded ideas. We understand that this is a challenge with Norfolk Southern, but we want everyone to have in their mind that this is a safety-third approach. And if our values are reflected in our infrastructure, so the work must continue.
Thanks, Mike.
That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda? It's the little one. Yeah, that's just a test. We can move that mic over to...
Hi, Council. Hi, staff. My name is Clark Mackey. I'm the Board Chair of Asheville on Bikes, and I love our city. I'm going to read to you a few of the survey responses. So two years ago, at councilperson Whistler's request, we surveyed bike riders to determine the extent of the danger of the railroad crossing. And Mike Abely showed the railroad crossing. These are some of the descriptions of what has been happening to cyclists at a rate of, we presume, a couple a month. When we asked, "Have you ever picked someone up who's been injured on the tracks or been injured?", almost every cyclist in our organization had a positive response. These are some of the detailed responses from actual people who were hurt. "I was unable to safely cross the tracks as it was raining and my tire got caught. I hit the pavement right in front of a car. Lots of road rash and some bruises." It had been... A new person. "It had been raining. I tried to angle the tires and go across the tracks. The front wheel went right out from under me, and I went forward headfirst. I hurt my wrist, shoulder, my leg, and I broke the derailleur." I... A new person. "I could not cross the tracks at a 90-degree angle because a large truck was coming from behind, so I did my best, but the bike tire caught in the track and I fell, broken collarbone and cracked pelvis. My front wheel caught the railroad tracks and I flipped. I landed on my shoulder, scraped my face, the top of my shoulder, and I broke my elbow. I have permanent mobility problems and a recurring pain from the injury. I was headed south on Riverside Drive when several cars approached me from the rear. I signaled to move left to try and cross perpendicular. The first car in line sped past me, forcing me back to the side of the road. As I crossed the tracks at less than the optimal angle, I caught my wheel in the tracks, went down, and skidded several feet on my left side. I had abrasions on my left side from my shoulder to my knee, a deep gash on my left elbow. My front wheel got stuck in the track and I flipped on the road. I had a broken radius and seven stitches across my chin. I was riding at high speed on my road bike, and I didn't expect the rail to be going diagonally across the road. There were cars behind me, so I wasn't able to correct in time because I would have ridden into traffic. My bike went out from under me and I hit my head on the rail. My helmet was cracked. I stood up and was disoriented. I called for help and went to the ER. I had a neck X-ray and an MRI. No breaks or major issues, but I had a significant concussion and was out of work the following week." We had 137 responses like these. Forty-two of people agreed to allow them to be shared in public, and I just read less than 10. This is a very serious public safety issue, and we expect staff to continue this effort to protect the northbound passageway for cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. So just, staff has approached Norfolk Southern with a solution that they actually use in Europe to help smooth out railroad tracks, but Norfolk Southern hasn't been willing to adopt that option. And then, staff has come up with some other engineering ideas and traffic calming possibilities. So I think, you know, just, like, fix what we're doing now, because it's, like we said, going south works, and it's a great improvement. But we just have to kind of keep on it and be creative, and ask our community to continue to be creative and patient with us, but that it's a priority.
Any other... Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay. Well, I appreciate Asheville on Bikes coming tonight. I've definitely heard from bikers myself.
Cyclists.
Cyclists, bikers, or motorcyclists, okay. Cyclists, myself, about having accidents at this location. Okay, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. We have no presentations and reports tonight under public... And let me just say, folks, if anybody's here for the one new business item, which is a resolution amending the City of Asheville land use incentive grant policy, that's been polled for tonight, and we will probably have it maybe next meeting? No, mouthing at me, January. January. Okay, January. All right, so we have three public hearings tonight. The first is a resolution to permanently close an unopened alley known as Lennox Court. Chad, are you going to do both?
Yes.
Resolution to permanently... The second one, a resolution to permanently close two unopened right-of-way known as Pond Road and Lance Lane located off of Long Shoals Road. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Manhur, Vice Mayor Whistler, other members of council. Can I...
Here, take that mic and kind of make...
Move it over.
Yeah, there you go.
We have two, well, actually, three different right-of-ways. Two are together. But the first will be Lennox Court, which I do not have the map in front of me. I apologize for that. But this is between Lennox Street and Hillside, on the property of the Jewish Community Center. The Jewish Community Center is actually the petitioner to close this. This particular closure did go in front of Multimodal Commission. Multimodal did support the closure of this right-of-way with the understanding that there would be pedestrian access left between the two streets, Hillside and Lennox, and that does exist today. There is pedestrian access. No ingress or egress has been eliminated from any other properties, and staff has been supportive of this request. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
I feel like this has already been closed physically. Not technically through our process, but physically, if you go out there today, it's closed.
You're correct.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already built up. There's a sidewalk there. Okay, any questions? Do you want to do a presentation on the next one, too? And then, or should we go ahead? Okay, well, let's do this one, and then we'll do the next one. All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing on the resolution to permanently close an unopened alley known as Lennox Court. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? If so, you will have three minutes, and please state your name.
Warren Sugg with Civil Design Concepts. We're the civil engineer on the project. I'd like to just show this exhibit, just to give some context. So as Chad mentioned, this is the JCC, and Charlotte Street to the north here, this is the expansion. And the right-of-way that's in question is being closed is in blue for you, and the pink is the remaining right-of-way of Lennox Court. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to close an unopened right-of-way known as Lennox Court.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next one is a resolution to permanently close two unopened right-of-ways known as Pond Road and Lance Lane located off of Long Shoals Road. And I assume we can do this with one motion? Yes.
And both of these right-of-ways are within the same property is why they have been grouped together in the same staff report and such. The petitioner of this is James Wilson of Long Shoals Development. He has been joined by Canyon Creek Vista's LLC and Karen and Gordon Fraser. Those are the adjoining property owners. This was presented to... The proposal to close all these was presented to all city staff through the TRC process, no objections, no objections from local utility companies. This was also presented to Multimodal. No objections, unanimous support on these. They are two dead-end right-of-ways that only affect the above adjacent properties that were mentioned, and staff also supports closing of these right-of-ways.
Okay, any questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing on the item of a resolution to permanently close two unopened right-of-ways known as Pond Road and Lance Lane located off of Long Shoals Road. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to adopt a resolution to close an unopened right-of-way known as Lance Lane Pond Street.
Second.
Okay. The agenda says Pond Road, but...
It does.
I bet it's Pond Street, though, because there is a Pond Road.
Mine says Pond Street.
Yeah, okay. So that motion is correct, then.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that concludes the road closing. The last public hearing item is a public hearing to amendments to Article... Maybe this is a typo. Public hearing regarding amendments to Article 8 of the Unified Development Ordinance in order to permit campgrounds and accessory dwelling units in the Highway Business Zoning District. Shannon Tuck will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. In July of this year, the petitioner for this request, Drew Crawford, submitted a zoning text amendment to the UDO regarding permitted uses in the highway business and the residential expansion zoning districts. This request has been amended somewhat. It's actually been reduced slightly, and it's boiled down now to two basic requests. The first is to add campgrounds as a permitted use in the highway business district, and the second is to add accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in the highway business district. After careful review and consideration, staff does not support the request, primarily because most highway business-owned properties are classified as urban corridor on the future land use map, which has been adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan. And urban corridors generally call for a higher density, higher intensity level of use arranged in an urban form with a particular focus on multimodal access. And campgrounds typically fall on the opposite end of that spectrum. They're usually a lower-density, lower-investment lodging or recreational use. Similarly, accessory dwelling units are defined as a dwelling unit that's associated with and subordinate to a single-family home, which is another form of low-density, low-investment use in a highway business district. Additionally, the Highway Business Zoning District by right already allows for high-density residential use, either in the form of attached multifamily dwelling units or as, like, individual cottage units. Both are broadly allowed in the highway business district, and typically, properties in the highway business district can support multiple dwelling units. There's nothing to prevent the construction of units, subject to compliance with all of those applicable standards. So in other words, if you want to build a unit that looks, feels, acts, and is subordinate to another single-family home on the property, and you happen to be zoned highway business, there is nothing to stop you from doing that. Just adding accessory dwelling units is just calling it something else. That accessory dwelling units, as you all know, are typically found in our single-family districts, and your... The property is limited to only one accessory dwelling unit. In the highway business district, there is no limit. You can have one, you can have two, you can have three, as long as you can meet all of the other applicable requirements. Also, regarding the request for campgrounds, this particular zoning text amendment is further complicated by the fact that the petitioner has publicly stated that what he is most interested in, in the campground use, is a way to allow a low-cost, flexible unit that, despite being limited to a temporary or recreational use, would be occupied on a long-term basis. More specifically, the applicant is interested in a particular product known as tiny homes on wheels, which are not typically inspected or approved for permanent living. So what the petitioner is asking for, campgrounds, which is a recreational or a temporary use, isn't exactly what he has publicly stated to be his priority, which is to provide a form of low-cost, flexible housing, which is not a recreational use, it's a residential use. As an alternative to this zoning text amendment, we would recommend that Mr. Crawford continue his efforts exploring a pathway to constructing his units under HUD's certification program or under the North Carolina Building Code. And that HUD program is similar to... It's a program that currently exists, is similar to what is used for manufactured homes. If this is achieved, if this can be achieved, then we can look at different zoning models. We already have an overlay designation that allows for manufactured housing. That could be, you know, considered and expanded in the future if there was interest in that. We could also look at whether or not it was appropriate to adopt a different zoning classification for tiny home communities, provided they can meet, you know, that housing standard, that certification standard, or that North Carolina Building Code standard. If that can be done, then we've definitely got the zoning tools to make it work where appropriate. That concludes my introduction. Be happy to answer. Any questions?
This is an individual who initiated the zoning change, so is the applicant here? Yes.
Yes. Hello, Drew Crawford. And I actually was hoping that I could let others speak first, if that is appropriate as part of the public...
Yeah, I just want to give you the opportunity.
Oh, I absolutely do. I would like to speak, please, but I would like to let others go first.
Okay. And just to be clear, how much time, just so we don't... Well, this is a public hearing, so everyone gets three minutes each.
I believe, and I...
You would get 10 as the petition.
Cool. Just thinking.
Okay, is there anyone... Hey, Maggie, is there a way to make that light, like, now cut off at the...
Okay.
Is that blinding all view now, or... Like, it blinds me. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Yes, sir, back there. If you'll just state your name, and you'll have three minutes, and please watch the lights on the lectern. That will indicate green means go, the orange means you're getting close to the end of your time, and red means stop.
Thank you very much. My name's Michael Judd. I'm here in support of Drew, and I'd like to cede my time to him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, he gets 10 minutes, so that's... Nobody else needs to cede their time. He already has 10 minutes. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes.
It's coming.
Oh, now, no, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. Hello, my name's Audra Schroder, and I just wanted to bring some numbers and a different kind of look at some of this stuff, a timeline, as a small business owner here in Asheville. So what I've done is I've taken a look into some of the numbers of the average and median incomes here in Asheville, and applied that to the average Asheville home value, how long it would take someone in my position or in these positions to purchase a home here versus a tiny house or a DIY tiny house. And so, the current average Asheville income is $28,106 a year. And based on the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it's... I've done a breakdown of what they've represented as overall... Excuse me, overall expenses and overall savings for the year. And then, based on that, with the average Asheville home value of $281,000 roughly, how long it would take an individual making the average Asheville income to save for a down payment on this house? And with the average income, it is 313 months, which is approximately 26.1 years. For a DIY tiny house with the average cost of $23,000, that's 128 months, which translates to 10.6 years. Or the down payment, 20% down on a pre-made, pre-manufactured tiny house, is 44 months or 3.7 years. So then, I also pulled it for the median Asheville income. And as you'll see down here, the breakdown for that is to save with the median income of $44,000 a year, roughly, it comes down to 199 months, which is 16.6 years to save for the average Asheville home. 81 months or 6.8 years for a pre-made tiny house, or 28.3 months, which is 2.4 years for the down payment on a tiny house. And so, obviously, one of the differences here is with a conventional home, you have your... Thank you. Your land and your home together. But with tiny houses, obviously, you have to look at lot rent, or with these campgrounds or other spaces where you can rent land. And so, you do have that added expense, but with 33.9% of your income coming to housing already, you'd be allotting some of that for your payment and for your lot rent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes.
My name's Amelia Schroder, and as a county resident, I'm very interested in tiny house living in general. I'm here in support of Drew and the possibility of Asheville setting an example with tiny houses moving forward as an affordable housing option. My partner and I are currently in possession of a tiny home. We moved to North Carolina two years ago, as it was one of the most tiny house-friendly states in the country at that time. The difference that that would make for us is 1,300 a month in rent plus utilities puts us at about 1,600 a month plus student loans, equals not a lot left over. Going into a tiny house would allow us to put money back into the local economy and really support the reasons and the companies and the culture and all those things that we moved here for in the first place. So I just ask that you consider the working people who are supporting Asheville as we move forward with this discussion tonight and in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification for staff. So is there anything... Folks can put accessory dwelling units on there. We loosened up, in fact, the accessory dwelling unit rules for neighborhoods, so people could add... You could call them a tiny home, or you could call them accessory dwelling unit, but essentially to properties right now throughout the city in residentially zoned areas.
That's right.
The question tonight is about, do we think it is a smart policy move to take a highway business zoning district and rezone it to allow for the proposed campground uses? Is essentially what it would have to be under our ordinance, because it would be with wheels or whatever.
Right. Part of the difficulty with this... One of the challenges with this conversation is that when we talk about tiny homes on wheels, this is a recreational unit. It is regulated under the DMV. It is not classified as housing.
It's defined by law, yeah.
It's not a dwelling unit. Regardless of what somebody's intent may be, it's not a dwelling unit. So we cannot put it in that category as housing. And that is what appears to be the driving force behind this. If property is classified as the use campground is permitted in the highway business district, these tiny homes may not stay on the property for more than 180 days. That is...
Because that's our regulation around RVs, campers.
Correct. Or they can't be lived in for longer than that. They can be moved from another site to another site, and that's the way some people commonly get around this requirement. But in Asheville, we can't do that. And this is true throughout the state of North Carolina. This is not just Asheville.
But the bottom line is, tiny homes are allowed as accessory dwelling units throughout residentially zoned areas.
Tiny meaning small.
Yep. Tiny, right. I mean, you can build...
We have no limits.
Yes. I mean, a lot of the, you know, communication we get around tiny homes, show me images that I know under our zoning classification would be considered accessory dwelling unit if you were to put it in the backyard of a, you know, the back half of a lot of a current home.
Correct.
Okay. So this is a little bit confusing, because people are saying, "Please allow tiny homes in your city." We allow them as accessory dwelling units right now.
Yes. We allow small homes. There is no obstacle there. However, when people use the term tiny homes, they are typically referring to tiny homes that are constructed without any safety inspections or anything on a flatbed trailer, and that trailer is portable and movable and mobile. And when that happens, that is not housing.
Then it's, under the building code, is no longer considered a dwelling unit.
Correct.
In North Carolina.
The state building code.
Right.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And in other states as well. This is... North Carolina isn't the only state that has it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's worth mentioning at this point. Was it just Saturday, a week ago, three of us, Vice Mayor Whistler and Councilman Haynes, and I went down and did a tour of the Simple Life Development in Henderson County, which is a... It is a tiny homes-on-wheels development. It is all tiny homes-on-wheels. Now, they have pulled the wheels up, so they are considered under... Well, it all seems a bit skating the line, but the wheels are not actually touching the ground. So they are considered, at that point, tiny homes. But we did learn a lot about how they are regulated by the... They are regulated by the DMV.
As a manufactured home.
As a manufactured home. You get a loan, you get a personal property loan, not a real estate loan to buy one of these things. It's very challenging to think about how we might do that here. I think there was a strong interest on the part of the three of us to do it here, figure out how we could do it here. We talked about an overlay zone. We talked about a number of things that we talked about, as Shannon mentioned, the fact that we already have... Excuse me, I have a bit of a cold. That we already have areas designated for recreational vehicles that could be used for this. I think we... I think there is a strong interest in wanting to... In wanting the staff to figure this out. I think for us, the interest was really figuring out, as some of the speakers have said, how this can fit into our affordability issue. At Simple Life, those units... And to be clear, these are units that can be bought for $125,000, so super, super-low price, nothing that we ever see here. But down there, they're being bought by relatively... I'm just going to call them... But down there, they're being bought by relatively, I'm just going to call them relatively wealthy retirees who are paying cash. That's not what, that's not the audience we're interested in serving here. So we would have, in addition to figuring out how we deal with the DMV regs and, and actually make it housing and make them permanent, we also would have to figure out how to ensure that, that whatever zoning we put in place was driving them to be affordable for the people that we know in our community want them to be affordable. And I, so no one has figured this out, but I think we, I think we are committed to doing that and I, I believe, it is my understanding that this is, this remains on staff's list of things to look at in the context of reviewing the UDO and continuing to look at affordability models. And if it's not, I would ask that it, that it, that it is, that it does continue to be on that list. So I just wanted to share that.
And, you know, just confusingly, while that's happening, the request tonight is specifically regarding rezoning and highway business zoning districts. So that's kind of a different question. If you, if you do figure out how to accommodate the use in your city, then where?
Right.
And, and, and this is proposing highway business zoning districts. So, okay, so now that we've had the many clarifications, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, if you want to, if you want to take an opportunity. The app, the.
The applicant.
Applicant or whatever.
I'll start by thanking council and staff for working on this issue. And your questions are good. Why are we talking about the highway business zoning district? Because that's the only thing that I can bring before you. I'm moving this forward in the most expeditious way that I am able to as a citizen and that happens to be through this process. Because six months ago, several of the things that we have accomplished in the last six months, I was told were not possible. So we'll get to that in just one second. Again, my name is Drew Crawford, DIY Tiny. The DIY aspect of it is because I want people to build their homes safely and I want them to truly be homes. I started kind of as a Habitat kid. My mother was the president of the local Habitat chapter and so I got to experience what constructing and, and being in a home smaller than the one that I grew up in felt like. And that was important. I then traveled and really saw how other people live and what do we value in the spaces? I work as a consultant and I had the opportunity in '14 to take my extra time and build myself a tiny home. And I asked myself the question, I'm using my privilege and my opportunity to do this, what can I do for others? And the only tools available to me in 2015 was a campground. So that is the tool that I utilized. We built the campground in '15, um, had all the building inspections then, we had the zoning folks come through in '17 and kind of were, thought we were in good shape. Zoning changed in '18. That brings us to these conversations now. The real piece is about opportunity. I spent three years trying to bring this to DSD, P&amp;Z, public presentations and frankly, until I put my own property at risk, this conversation didn't move forward. And what we're really fundamentally asking for is formalization and normalization of what it means to live in a smaller space. When there's 10 of them, they're, they're cute. When 100 of them, we start asking questions. When there's 1,000 of them, it starts to begin to be a bit of a problem. And that's kind of where we are right now. They were cute, then there were questions, and now what do we do with it? So here's our roadmap. What have we accomplished thus far? How did we get here and what's next? Tiny homes on wheels, mobile tiny homes are possible in the state of North Carolina. We sat down with DSD, P&amp;Z. Shannon Tuck was able to get everybody in the same room and that made all of the difference. And what we were able to recognize is that the DOI, Department of Insurance, Office of State Fire Marshal, in 2015 issued a memo. My architect said, you know, we can take this thing, we can put it on a foundation. This is a dwelling unit. And we even had clarifications in 2019, this, this year, to deal with this whole, what you guys saw down in Simple Life are both the true on wheels, but also these dual labeled model units that are both modular and RV. So this is one of the things we were able to recognize just last month through this process. So affordable housing is complicated and tiny houses are messy. And we're just going to give you a very quick history so we understand how do we get to this point? We built a car. What did we do with the car? We took it into the woods to go camping. Well, then when there were 10 people, that was fine. Then there were 100 people and cities said, hey, this is a sanitation and a water issue. So cities started providing places for people to park and they would provide sanitation, they would provide water. Then we had the depression and people lived where they could live, where they could afford to live. They did what they had to do. And cities said, that's not so cool anymore. We're going to have to start drawing lines. We're going to have to start saying, mm, you can only stay there for 180 days at a time. So we went through a period of time where we started having temporary assigned to things. After the war, we had a building boom. Again, there weren't regulations in place and people were building houses as fast as they could and they didn't meet safety standards. And so the seventies, we made safety standards and we decided that they should be eight feet wide and 40 feet long. That is the smallest unit that HUD can, can regulate. And that's why manufactured homes all look like hot dogs because that is what we decided in the seventies where they were allowed to regulate. Since that's what they were allowed to regulate, that's what was built. You can do voluntary compliance and there are exemptions for things under 400 square feet. And that's where RVs came from and that's where tiny houses are using the rules that are available to us. But, yeah, we're in Asheville. People like to be creative with their solutions that were given. Now here's your wall of text. This is what we're having to work through right now to understand what does it mean to make tiny houses work? It's messy. Go to the bottom line. Dual labeled, modular and RV. At 399 square feet, we can declare it both a modular home that meets North Carolina code and an RV. That's what you're seeing done in other places. So we have our cabin, our small space, and we made rules that we can keep building bigger and bigger and bigger. But we've never turned around and said, what does it mean to build things safely and put them in smaller and smaller spaces? So what's next? This conversation about scale and size, undrawing lines and of course affordable housing and the obstacles to affordable housing. Zoning, I want to say yes to the YIMBs. Yes, I want this in my backyard. What we need council to direct staff, we need to empower the staff to write the rules to say yes to people. Size and scope. We're really talking about, when we talk about ADUs, the reason you see ADUs in front of you is because you have written rules for ADUs that have smaller setbacks. I want to build small units. If I use the rules for ADUs, they have smaller setbacks, different size, different scope characteristics. These are some of the things that we're beginning to have the conversations about. Pocket Neighborhoods was written a few years ago, expanding where, redraw the lines, draw the lines so that we can do pocket neighborhoods in all appropriate areas. So where can we put a tiny house? Anywhere dwelling unit belongs. We're asking you guys to start writing the scope and the size because we don't want to live in constant transition. We don't want to skirt the rules. We want to live in communities and we need you to write the rules. So here's the ask. Here are the three pieces that you saw in email. One, recognize the size and scope matter. Have the conversation about ADUs and where you can put cottage developments. Two, the construct of residential campground. Write the special use district rules for campgrounds because that's the infrastructure that is needed for small things. But write the rules so you put the right units in the right spaces. And the third, to really address affordable housing, we use tiny houses as a bridge between rental and ownership. It's the piece that you can own a portion of it and still rent a portion of it. So write the rent tables or lot rent tables through the Affordable Housing books. Time check?
2:42.
Thank you. So just to provide you a little bit more detail as we go through here, HUD, bottom line on this one, HUD in 2019 clarified their ruling for the HUD exemption, meaning we want nothing to do and we can't do anything with under 400 square foot dwelling units. That's for the states. That's for the local municipalities. You guys have a role to play in this. You can write the rules because HUD doesn't want anything to do with it. We know how to handle the building code rules at the state level. I just, I talk about this as non-discriminatory zoning, which is basically, don't write rules that prevent people from living where they want to live in a way as long as is safe. The construct of a campground is not needed anymore. We're just, again, utilizing that as the descriptor for the size of space we're building. Villas infill and all of those other pieces we've talked about. But I want to really land on this slide, which I, Madam Manager, um, this is her slide from the Affordable Housing Workshop, where she really identified all of these pieces where policy comes into place with community so that we can actually make change happen because this is an economic issue. This is a race issue. This is a political issue because we are not creating the spaces that are needed for people to live in this town. So back to the ask of council. I put in front of you tonight what I can put in front of you. I'm asking that you empower staff to write the rules to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, we'll, we'll close the public hearing on this item. Are there questions or comments from council before we enter? I saw there was some chat. Do you have some information?
I would just like for Shannon, just to clarify again, I think, Mayor, that's what you were trying to do earlier. I just want to make sure.
Sure.
That we understand that tiny homes are allowed in this community.
And I'm going to use the term small homes, very small homes. We, the city of Asheville does not have a minimum size requirement for a home. That is not, it, some cities do, Asheville does not. We have neither minimum nor maximum size requirement in Asheville. What we do require is that if you live in it for more than 180 days, that it either be, one, built under the North Carolina State Building Code, or two, be certified through HUD's program. And that ensures that the unit is safe, it's met all the safety requirements for permanent housing. Anything else is regulated under the DMV or in some other form and does not meet the standard for housing. If there's interest, you know, a campground is generally regarded as, as a recreational form of lodging. That is a very different kind of conversation. Much of what's being talked about today as it relates to tiny homes has to do with the building code. It is not a zoning question. I, as I said earlier, we have the zoning tools, tools available to allow small home communities. We already broadly allow small home communities, either through our cottage home standards, our multifamily zoning districts, all of our commercial districts allow for what is sort of a cottage, small home community that's already broadly allowed in Asheville. It just has to be built under one of these two certification inspection programs.
Thank you.
Well, and so I think the, thanks Shannon, that's helpful. I mean, the, the, the problem, of course, is when you get into those two levels of certifications, your cost goes up. So that's one of the things I think we learned on, on, on our field trip and it, I mean, I'll just speak for myself. I, and I've been saying this at HCD for several months now, I, I would very much like us to figure out how we can take the tiny homes on wheels model, um, where you can come in at a price point of $125,000 for someone to purchase it, which we are never going to see again in a real home here in Asheville. I, I have an interest in, in staff moving forward with that. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to support a, this one-off change until, because I think we need to look at it in the larger context and, and I apologize for that, Drew, but I, I previewed that for you. So I, I would very much like for staff to continue to take a look at this. I do think it's a combination of, of zoning and DSD and, and affordable. I think it's, um, those three departments need to be involved in this conversation. And, and I would like it to move forward. I'm not, I know there is a lot on everybody's plate right now, so I, I'm not going to be specific about the timeframe within which that moves forward, but I do think it is an option that we need to explore if we are ever, I mean, it is, it is a new option for affordability. There are lots, still lots of questions about it. It's not clear that these homes appreciate, so it's not clear that it gets at the, the building wealth aspect that Councilman Young continues to talk about and is very important. But it is a model that we just don't have right now and, and I, we, in my view, we have not exported enough to, to, to set it aside as something that we don't want, so.
Any other questions, comments, or motion?
Just a comment. Drew, I commend you for your creativity and being able to put forth, you've, you've been here several times. We've, um, I think there's, there's quite a few of us up here who, who want to see something move forward in some kind of way, in a cohesive way. I think your creativity and getting in front of us to make this thing work will push your issue forward a bit. And hopefully, I don't know what the timeframe is going to be, but it would be my hope that we can see something come out of it. And I think you have some support. I don't know where everybody else stands. I'll just speak for myself. I don't agree with the one-off tonight, but I would ask that you please continue to keep in contact with staff and other council members as well to help forward your cause. So, thank you.
I, I would agree with that. I, I see we got an email from the Tiny House Industry Association Director of Government Relations. Maybe they are a resource to help guide a city through this. I, I mean, it is kind of interesting, the evolution that cities have gone through because many cities have zoned out mobile home parks. And mobile homes, of course, are mostly regulated by the DMV. They are titled by the DMV. They depreciate in value and, and they, they don't create density that cities are looking for from a zoning perspective. And this is, on paper, really no different. A tiny home on wheels is a DMV titled mobile home, uh, which depreciates in value most likely, uh, and where you pay lot rent. And, um, so I, I, I think we've got a little ways to go before we fully understand how, how and whether it's a good idea to reincorporate that model under this new look, this new feel. It feels very contemporary. It looks contemporary, but is it? You know, in my mind, you know, I think we need to understand how, how will make sense to move back in that direction under this new, new format? And that may be the case. I don't, I don't know enough about, about it one way or the other to say, but I'm glad we're looking at the possibility. I see you're getting up and walking towards us, so.
I'm just going to offer an answer to that question if you would like it.
I, I, sure.
To the degree that you wanted to be a conversation, um, the fundamental difference between a manufactured home, which we think of as mobile homes, and the modular home. Modular meets North Carolina building code. Manufactured operates and uses the HUD code. They're two entirely separate pathways in terms of what they're expected to be. For me, this is really putting the mobile tiny home so that you can have the control over a code-built house that you can move if someone increases your lot rent. And to the HCD folks, there is actually a proposal coming to you guys using the rules that we have discovered in the last five months because I have gone through this process. So we are bringing that to you with what we've discovered thus far. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to? Ready to make a motion? Okay.
I move to deny the proposed awarding amendments to Article 8 of the UDO and find that the proposed amendments are inconsistent with the city's comprehensive plan in that, one, campgrounds defined as areas for temporary occupancy for recreational use are not consistent with the vision for urban corridors, and, two, accessory dwelling units, which generally accompany low-density, single-family development, are not consistent with the support of commercial development encouraged in the highway business zone and therefore the action to deny is reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That concludes the public hearings portion of our agenda. As I mentioned earlier, we have, um, we are withdrawing the one item under new business, that being a resolution amending the city of Asheville's Land Use Incentive Grant Policy, which we will see hopefully in January. I have a number of people that are signed up to speak tonight, so this works much like the public hearing portion of our agenda. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to speak and just watch the lights on the lecterns for your indicators there. The first person who signed up to speak is Jody Williams.
Before I speak, can I have someone pass each one?
If you'll hand them to the clerk, she will pass them around.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Hope you all can all see that. Good evening, my name is Jody Williams, I'm a native to Asheville and one of the founding members of Help Asheville Bears. Help Asheville Bears is here tonight to bring your attention to a historic tragic event affecting at least a dozen black bears in a 25-mile radius and around Asheville. Four months ago, a bear that I and my family knew by the name of Peaches, a mother with three cubs, disappeared near the Cliffs Community in Arden. When Peaches reappeared four weeks later on August 18th, her cubs were with her, but she was missing her front right fore limb and paw from the elbow down. Her cubs looked healthy, but Peaches had lost significant weight, was extremely skittish and struggling to get around. All that knew her as a healthy and happy bear were devastated by her injury. A few days later, a local media outlet ran a story about a bear with a missing limb, and when we learned it was a different bear than our Peaches, that's when we knew human interference was maiming bears, and Help Asheville Bears was born. In less than four months, the Help Asheville Bears Facebook page has grown to over 68,000 followers. And coverage of these tragic events have reached an international audience. Colonel Scotty Morgan and his wife Carol have pledged a $50,000 reward for any information leading to the arrest and conviction of whoever is harming our bears. With the help of our followers, we have now 12 confirmed individual bears, five of which are mothers with cubs. With unusual amputation injuries in a cluster in and around Asheville, nowhere else on earth has there ever been this many bears with amputation injuries in such a small area. With the help of several veterinarian wildlife experts, including a forensic veterinary pathologist from the University of Florida, we know that these excruciatingly painful debilitating amputation injuries were caused by a snare trap or a ligature. The 12 confirmed main bears are the ones that escaped these traps. There's no way to know how many did not escape and were illegally killed after prolonged and agonized suffering. Initially, the North Carolina Wildlife Commission concluded that the injuries were all caused by car strikes, which in itself would also be a huge problem that needed to be solved. But now, after months of day and night collaboration with Governor Cooper's office, Lieutenant Governor Forrest's office, and Attorney General Stein's office, and the commission's Wildlife Enforcement Division, we are confident that the state is using its resources to put an end to the maiming of our bears. We respectfully request that City Council liaise with the state government so that they are aware that you too want a quick resolution to stop these horrific injuries inflicted upon our beloved black bears. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Teresa Newman.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Newman, I'm here on behalf of Help Asheville Bears. I'm sure that you all would agree that no matter what level of compassion someone may have for wildlife, that the majority of Asheville citizens would be horrified that the black bears in our community are being tortured and mutilated by illegal bear traps, specifically snare traps. Ironically, it's not illegal to sell bear traps online or in local retail stores, but it is against the law in North Carolina to set these traps. You may wonder why anyone would commit such a heinous crime against black bears. Well, the answer is, for money. There's a booming black market trade for live bears, dead bears, and bear parts in Asia and predominantly in China. Even though it's against the law, bear poaching operations are occurring right now in western North Carolina. The 12 bears with amputated limbs that Jody mentioned are just the ones that we know about. There are God knows how many other bears that, in the Asheville area, that have been maimed or killed by bear poachers. With that said, bears with amputated paws and legs can survive, but they struggle on a daily basis to hop on a mountainous wooded terrain, to forage for food, especially in the spring, to protect themselves and their cubs, and while handicapped, to survive hunting season. I hope the council will also agree that the persons harming these bears in our community must be held responsible. Not only is bear poaching and illegal bear traps cruel and inhumane, it is against the law and it must be stopped in our city and surrounding areas. The members of Help Asheville Bears spent months trying to convince the North Carolina Wildlife Commission that these amputations were not caused by car strikes. It was obvious to us, and it was confirmed by wildlife experts and forensic veterinarians. So thankfully now, the North Carolina Wildlife Investigators have finally started an investigation. But we need your help. Again, respectfully, the Help Asheville Bears is requesting that the City Council liaise with the State Attorney General's Office and the North Carolina Wildlife Commission to convict the persons committing these atrocious crimes against the black bears of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Sarah Stroup.
I am the mother of three, I have a fiance, and I am the caretaker to my fiance. He was a veteran for 21 years, actually 20 years, nine months, and 14 days, but who's counting? We all have, this community has come together, and there are a lot of caregivers. We have over 5,500 veterans just in the city of Asheville. Those people need help, and those are those caregivers. We are always working with the VA, and today even, I spent the day and kept hitting roadblocks after roadblock, frustration after frustration. So I have provided the resolution for the Elizabeth Dole Hidden Heroes City, and I request that you make Asheville a Hidden Heroes City. This way, we will be able to put local and national resources together, and caregivers can get with other caregivers. The VA is overloaded, they've had one thing after another, but the Elizabeth Dole Foundation, she has made a difference. She, I don't know if you've heard, they've added, the caregiver program is so specific. This February, it will be opened up to another set of veterans. This will also connect, I know in 2007, Mayor Bellamy created the Mayor's Committee for Veteran Affairs, NC SERBS is a local organization that helps Land of Sky Regional Council offers caregiver programs, the VA, and then the other counties. We all need to come together to support the caregivers. In October, we had quite a month. Not only are we dealing with normal things, I'm a mother of three, like I said, I had two hand surgeries, carpal tunnel, the first week, state employees' crediting was hacked, and our accounts were wiped out. Two weeks later, our washer breaks, the night before Halloween, we have a roof leak, all while I'm trying to deal with Mark's disabilities, and dealing with the VA, and trying to set up everything. Mark will be going to Colorado, to the TBI, Marcus Institute for Brain Health, Iowa had the opportunity meeting Gary Sinise, he also works with the foundation along with Tom Hanks, and we are going to be able to go out there. We will be going to Texas for the polytrauma unit next year. All this together while trying to maintain the house and do Halloween for my kids. It's a lot. When I asked help from the VA, they gave me two names of local nonprofits that could help. There should be more, and I know there's more, and in all my research, I found Elizabeth Dole Foundation. And I have decided that that, she has made such a difference, and so I ask for your consideration to sign the resolution. Thank you.
Do we have that resolution?
Ma'am, I have a question. Have you?
We emailed council.
You've got it?
Yeah, we were.
Okay.
I'll be happy to reset.
Please.
Yeah. Can we send it to a committee so we know it will? We can. The, one of the, the resolution calls for several actions to be taken by the city that we don't currently provide those functions. So it would be a very new thing for the city of Asheville to do this.
And that is just the generic template?
Yeah.
They did say that we could come up with our own and work together, and that would be more fitting to the area.
And we do have partnerships already with the VA, and it may be that we need to sit down and kind of explore that a little bit more about what's already in existence, and ways to build on that, but, yep. Yes, it has been distributed, though, and you all have it in here. So are you going to make the call about where it goes in terms of our process of either boards and commissions or city council committees? I think it would be most appropriate to get with, although you sound very busy, so I don't know if you would be the right person, but to get with staff and to find out what we're already doing there.
My kids are on year-round, and today was their last day for a month and a half, so my schedule is completely up and up until New Year's.
Well, I mean, Deborah, would it be possible to follow up with her and have, and sort of just see what, kind of talk through what we're already doing and what the resolution proposes? But I thank you for making this effort, and I know it takes a lot of time, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next person signed up to speak is Sarah Benoit.
Hello, everyone, I'm Sarah Benoit, and tonight I'm here to talk about the importance of declaring a climate emergency in the city of Asheville. As a local citizen, I've worked with a number of groups, including Community Roots, the Sunrise Movement Asheville, and Extinction Rebellion. And as I'm sure you've all come to know, I firmly believe in the importance of Asheville stepping into a more innovative leadership role in the state of North Carolina and on the national stage. I believe our state is home to a majority of residents that are underrepresented or sometimes not represented at all when it comes to our state politics. And the only way that this changes is if we begin to think differently and take actions to transform the direction of our state on the local level. I know this shift presents many seemingly insurmountable challenges and obstacles along the way, but at this point, based on science, there is actually no easy road ahead for us. And I truly believe in my heart the shift is possible if we act now. One of the actions that we can take as a city is to declare a real climate emergency and set some goals and standards in our city that might be outside of what the state of North Carolina allows, and what the federal government says is possible, and what Duke Energy would like us to do. The truth is, the old ways of doing things haven't worked. All of our good intentions have led to the worst crisis in human history and the destruction of so much life at our hands. It will take nothing less than a total re-engineering of our way of life to solve the problem. I believe this is still possible, but only if our leaders, you, speak clearly and courageously about our way forward. I know change won't happen overnight, I know that we'll all make sacrifices, I know that we'll all struggle, but we must change if we want to have a future to look towards, and if we want to preserve the beautiful, magical, incredible land that we have the honor to live on. Please declare a real climate emergency, not one full of platitudes and aspirations, but one full of innovative thinking, courageous questioning, and bold action. Begin the process of helping our whole community get off fossil fuels by 2030. Begin thinking about how people and companies with means will be called to invest in societal systems and infrastructure that benefit our region and our people as a whole. Think about how we can create robust opportunities to retrain and prepare people for a different kind of economy than the one we're used to. Think about how our city can invest in new approaches, new ways of thinking, and new technologies, and become leaders in the transformation of our city and our world. This way forward is no longer radical, it's rational, it's not crazy and impossible, it's logical and necessary. And it's time for Asheville to take the lead, it's time for us to act courageously. Please don't hesitate.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Sally Thames. And I'm sorry if I'm saying your last name wrong.
Thames.
Thames. All those spelled T. Sorry. It should, it should come back on. He'll flip it around, unless, there you go.
Hi again, I'm Sally Thames with the Sunrise Movement. Today, we are here to reprimand the council's inability to pass a climate emergency resolution as written. When we were told to work with Stacy, all of the substantive measures and urgent timelines were stripped from the resolution, and we were left with only optics. The resolution drafted by Stacy would allow council to appear as though they are taking action, when in fact, it is nowhere near sufficient to take on the scale of the climate crisis. We have written a response resolution that includes clear timelines and required reports back to hold the city accountable, and we urge you to bring this resolution to a vote on December 10th, following the next American climate strike on December 6th. We have been at many council meetings in the past year and have been met with hostility and condescension. We realize that you are not interested in listening to us, so maybe you will listen to leading climate journalist Naomi Klein. She recently released a new book, On Fire: The Burning Case for a Green New Deal. Today, young people will be using their public comment to read you pertinent passages from Naomi Klein's book in an effort to evoke a sense of empathy and responsibility in you, our representatives. Every decision you make on council should be made while considering the massive scale of the issue at hand. We have been told by the world's greatest scientists, who historically give understated and conservative predictions, that we have only 10 years left. We are running out of time. Today, a new UN report stated that we must keep our rising temperatures below 2 degrees Celsius, and we are on trajectory to be at 3.9 degrees Celsius by 2100. We have been pushed into other committees and made to jump through bureaucratic hoops. It is clear that you intend to push aside the most important issue of our time and disregard our concerns for our futures and our livelihoods. We will not stop fighting for radical climate action because we know it is right. When I am on my deathbed, which may be sooner than I'd like because of this crisis, I will never wish I had done less to help save the planet for the people I love and the places I call home. I will only wish I had done more. We are giving you the opportunity to do more right now. Vote to pass the climate emergency resolution we have written and prove that you care about my future, and the future of all the youth standing behind me, and the future of your own children. The youth of America and of the world are tired of being told it is our job to clean up the mess that was made before we were even here to add to it. But we have been given no choice. We will continue to show up and speak out until you act in ways that address the climate crisis for what it is, an emergency.
The next person signed up to speak is Flannery Clark.
Hi, my name is Flannery Clark, and I'm with the Sunrise Movement today. My comment is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written, and vote on it on December 10th meeting, following the December 6 Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this issue. It's called "A People's Emergency." Yet, as deep as our crisis runs, something equally deep is also shifting, and with a speed that startles me. As I write these words, it is not only our planet that is on fire, so are the social movements rising up to declare from below a people's emergency. In addition to the wildfire of student strikes, we have seen the rise of Extinction Rebellion, which exploded on the scene and kicked off a wave of nonviolent direct action and civil disobedience, including a mass shutdown of large parts of central London. Extinction Rebellion is calling on governments to treat climate change as an emergency, to rapidly transition to 100% renewable energy in line with the climate science, and to dramatically develop the plan for how to implement that transition through citizens' assemblies. Within days of its most dramatic actions in April 2019, Wales and Scotland both declared a state of climate emergency, and British Parliament, under pressure from opposition parties, quickly followed suit. In this same period in the United States, we have seen the meteoric rise of the Sunrise Movement, which burst onto the political stage when it occupied the office of Nancy Pelosi, the most powerful Democrat in Washington DC, one week after her party had won the majority in the election. With no time for congratulations, the Sunriseers accused the party of having no plan to respond to the climate emergency. They called on Congress to immediately adopt a rapid decarbonization framework, one ambitious in speed and scope as FDR's New Deal, or, New Deal, sorry, the sweeping package of policies designed to battle the poverty of the Great Depression and economic collapse of the Dust Bowl. The activism we are seeing today builds on this history and also changes the equation completely. Though many of the efforts just described were large, they still engage primarily with self-identified environmentalists and climate activists. If they did reach beyond those circles, the engagement was rarely sustained for more than a single march or pipeline fight. Outside the climate movement, there was still a way that the planetary crisis could be forgotten for months on end, or go barely mentioned during pivotal election campaigns. Our current moment is markedly different. Our current moment is markedly different and the reason for that is twofold. One part happened to do with a mounting sense of peril, the other with a new and unfamiliar sense of promise. So, this is another different section. So let's summarize. Responding to the climate change requires that we break every rule in the free-market playbook and that we do so with great urgency. We need to rebuild the public sphere, reverse privatizations, relocalize large parts of economies, scale back overconsumption, bring back long-term planning, heavily regulate. Thank you.
Rachel Aronson?
Hi, my name is Rachel and I'm here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it at the December 10th meeting, following the December 6th Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. One month before the Sunriseers occupied the soon-to-be House Speaker Nancy Pelosi's office, the UN Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change published a report that had a greater impact than any publication in the 31-year history of the Nobel Peace Prize-winning organization. The report examined the implications of keeping the increase in planetary warming below 1.5 degrees Celsius. Given the worsening disasters that we are already seeing, about 1 Celsius degree of warming is found that keeping temperatures below 1.5 threshold is humanity's best chance to avoid truly catastrophic unraveling. What is needed, the report's summary states in its first sentence, is rapid, far-reaching, unprecedented changes in all aspects of society. This was not the first terrifying climate report by any means, nor the first unequivocal call from respected scientists for radical emission reduction. My bookshelves are crowded with these findings, but like Greta Thunberg's speeches, the starkness of the IPCC's call for root-and-branch societal change and the shortness of the timeline it laid out for pulling it off focused a public mind like nothing before. A big part of that has to do with the source. After governments came together to recognize the threat of global warming in 1988, the United Nations created the IPCC to provide policymakers with the most reliable information possible to inform their decisions. For this reason, the panel synthesizes all the best science to come up with the projections that a great many scientists need to agree on anything before it is made public. And even then, nothing can go out before the governments themselves sign off. Because of this laborous process, IPCC projections have been notoriously conservative, often dangerously underestimating risk. And yet, here was a report drawing on some 6,000 sources created by nearly 100 authors and review editors, saying in no uncertain terms that if governments did as little to cut emissions as they were currently pledging to do, they were headed toward consequences including sea-level rise that would swallow coastal cities, the total die-off of coral reefs, and droughts that would wipe out crops in huge parts of the globe. Today's high school students will still be in their 20s when global emissions need to have already cut in half to avoid those outcomes. And yet, the fateful decisions about whether those cuts will happen, decisions that will shape their entire lives, are being made well before most of them even have the right to vote. It was against this backdrop that 2019's cascade of large and militant climate mobilizations unfolded. Again and again, at strikes and protests, we heard the words, "We only have 12 years."
Thank you. Emerson Kop?
Hi, my name is Emerson and I'm here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it at the December 10th meeting, following the December 6th Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. The rapidly escalating cruelty of our present moment cannot be overstated, nor can the long-term damage of the collective psyche should this go unchallenged. Beneath the theater of some governments denying climate change and others claiming to be doing something about it while they fortress their borders from its effects, there's only one overarching question facing us. In the rough and rocky future that has already begun, what kind of people are we going to be? Will we share what's left and try to look after one another? Or are we instead going to attempt to hoard what's left, look after our own, and lock everyone else out? In this time of rising seas and rising fascism, these are the stark choices before us. There are options besides full-blown climate barbarism, but given how far that road, given how far down that road we are, there's no point pretending that they are easy. It's going to take a lot more than a carbon tax or cap and trade. It's going to take an all-out war on pollution and poverty and racism and colonialism and despair all at the same time. Perhaps most importantly, if we are going to avoid a future marked by more brutal scapegoating of the most vulnerable and blameless, we will need to find the fortitude to go head-to-head with the powerful players that bear the greatest responsibility for the climate crisis. Taking on the fossil fuel sector can seem impossibly daunting. It has unlimited wealth to spend lobbying politicians to pass draconian laws that target activists and to purchase public relations advertisements that pollute the public airwaves. And yet, this sector is far more vulnerable to various forms of pressure than it first appears. The message coming from the school strikes is that a great many young people are ready for this kind of deep change. They know all too well that the sixth mass extinction is not the only crisis they have inherited. They are also growing up in a rubble of market euphoria in which the dreams of endlessly rising living standards have given way to rampant austerity and economic insecurity. And techno-utopianism, which imagined a frictionless future of limited connection and community, has morphed into addiction to the algorithms of envy, relentless corporate surveillance, and spiraling online misogyny and white supremacy. Once you have done your homework, Greta Thunberg says, you realize that we need new politics. We need new economics, where everything is based on a rapidly declining and extremely limited carbon budget. But that is not enough. We need a whole new way of thinking. We must stop competing with each other. We need to start cooperating and sharing the remaining resources of this planet in a fair way. Because our house is on fire, this should come as no surprise. Built on false promises, discounted futures, thank you.
Amy Greco? Pardon me if I'm not saying your last name right.
Hi, my name is Amy Greco and I am here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask you to pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on on December 10th at the meeting, following the December 6th climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. There is a grand story to be told here about duty, duty to repair, to repair our relationship with the earth and with one another. Because while it is true that climate change is a crisis produced by an excess of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, it is also a more profound sense, a crisis produced by an extractive mindset, by a way of viewing both the natural world and the majority of its inhabitants as resources to use up and then discard. I call it the gig and dig. Economy and firmly believe that we will not emerge from the crisis without a shift in a worldwide view at every level, a transformation to an ethos of care and repair. Repairing the land, repairing our stuff, fearlessly repairing our relationships with our countries and between them. We must always remember that fossil fuel era began in the violent kleptocracy with two foundational thefts of stolen people and stolen land that kickstarted a new age of seemingly endless expansion. The route to a new renewal runs through the reckoning and repair, reckoning with our past and repairing the relationships with the people who paid the steepest price of the first industrial revolution. These failures to confront difficult truths have long made a mockery of any notion of a collective "we." Only when we reckon with them will be our societies will be liberated to find our collective purpose. In fact, the delivering that sense of common purpose is perhaps the Green New Deal's greatest promise because it isn't only the planet's life support system that are unraveling before our eyes. So too is our social fabric, on so many fronts at once. The signs of fracture are all around, from the rise of fake news and unhinged conspiracy theories to the hardened arteries of our political body. In this context, a Green New Deal, precisely because of its sweeping scale, ambition, and urgency, could be the collective purpose that finally helps overcome many of these divides. It's not a magic cure for racism or misogyny or homophobia or transphobia. We still have to confront those evils head-on, but if it became law, despite all the powers arrayed against it, it would give a great many of us a sense of working together towards something bigger than ourselves, something we are all a part of creating, and it would give us a shared destination, somewhere distinctly better than where we are now. That kind of shared mission is something our late capitalists badly needs right now. The Green New Deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Graham Hall?
Hi, my name is Graham Hall and I am here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it at the December 10th meeting, following the December 6th Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. The hard truth is that the answer to the question, "What can I, as an individual, do to stop climate change?" is nothing. You can't do anything. In fact, the very idea that we, as automized individuals, even lots of automized individuals, could play a significant part in stabilizing the planet's climate system or changing the global economy is objectively nuts. We can only meet this tremendous challenge together as part of a massive and organized global movement. The irony is that people with relatively little power tend to understand this far better than those with a great deal more power. The workers I met in Indonesia and the Philippines knew all too well that governments and corporations did not value their voice or even the lives of these individuals. And because of this, they were driven to not only act together, but on rather a large political canvas, to try to change the policies and factories that employ thousands of workers or in export zones that employ tens of thousands, or the labor laws in an entire country of millions. Their sense of individual perseverance has pushed them to be politically ambitious to demand structural changes. In contrast, here in a wealthier country, we are told how powerful we are as an individual all the time, as consumers, even individual activists. And the result is that despite our power and privilege, we often end up acting on canvases that are unnecessarily small, the canvas of our own lifestyle, or maybe our neighborhood, or maybe our neighborhood. Meanwhile, we abandon the structural changes, the policy, and legal work to others. This is not to belittle little local activism. Local is critical. Local organizing is winning big fights against fracking and oil pipelines. Local is showing us what the post-carbon economy looks and feels like. And small examples inspire bigger ones. College of the Atlantic was one of the first schools to divest from fossil fuels. And you made the decision, I am told, in a week. It took that kind of leadership from small schools that knew their values to push more, shall we say, insecure institutions to follow suit, like Stanford University, like Oxford University, like the British Royal Family, like the Rockefeller Family. All have joined the movement since you did. So, local matters, but local is not enough. I got a vivid reminder of this when I visited Red Hook, Brooklyn, in the immediate aftermath of Superstorm Sandy. Red Hook is one of the hardest-hit neighborhoods and is home to an amazing community farm, a place that teaches kids from nearby housing projects how to grow healthy food, provides composting for a huge number of residents, hosts a weekly farmers' market, and runs a terrific community-supported agricultural program. In short, it was doing everything right, reducing food miles, staying away from petroleum inputs, sequestering carbon in the soil, reducing landfill by composting, fighting inequality and food insecurity. But when the storm came, none of that mattered. The entire harvest was lost. Thank you for your time.
Jamie West?
Hi, my name is Jamie West and I'm here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it at the December 10th meeting, following the December 6th Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. How will we adapt to the people made homeless and jobless by increasingly intense and frequent natural disasters? How will we treat the climate refugees who arrive on our shores in leaky boats? Will we open our borders, recognizing that we created the crisis from which they are fleeing? Or will we build ever-more high-tech fortresses and adopt ever-more draconian anti-immigration laws? How will we deal with the resource scarcity? We know the answers already. The corporate quest for scarce resources will become more rapacious, more violent. Arable land in Africa will continue to be grabbed to provide food and fuel to wealthier nations. Drought and famine will continue to be used as a pretext to push genetically-modified seeds, driving farmers further into debt. We will attempt to transcend peak oil and gas by using increasingly risky technologies to extract the last drops, turning ever-larger swaths of our globe into sacrifice zones. We will fortress our borders and intervene in foreign conflicts over resources, or start those conflicts ourselves. Free-market climate solutions, as they are called, will be a magnet for speculation, fraud, and crony capitalism as we are already seeing with carbon trading and the use of forests as carbon offsets. And as climate change begins to affect not just the poor, but the wealthy as well, we will increasingly look for techno-fixes to turn down the temperature with massive and unknowable risks. As the world warms, the reigning ideology that tells us it's everyone for themselves, that victims deserve their fate, and that we can master nature, will take us to a very cold place indeed. And it will only get colder as theories of racial superiority, barely under the surface and parts of the denial movement, make a raging comeback. These theories are not optional. They are necessary to justify the hardening of hearts to the largely blameless victims of climate change in the global south and in predominantly African-American cities like New Orleans. Shifting cultural values is admittedly a tall order. It calls for the kind of ambitious vision that movements used to fight for a century ago, before everything was broken into single issues to be tackled by the appropriate sector of business-minded, non-governmental organizations. Climate change is, in the words of The Stern Review on the Economics of Climate Change, "The greatest example of market failure we have ever seen." By all rights, this reality should be filling progressive sails with conviction, breathing new life and urgency into longstanding fights against everything from pro-corporate free trade to financial speculation to industrial agriculture to third-world debt, while elegantly weaving all these struggles into a coherent narrative about how to protect life on Earth. Thank you.
Malcolm Mitchell?
Hello, my name is Malcolm Mitchell. I'm here with The Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented and as written and vote on it on December 10th meeting, following the December 6th Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. One of the most distressing ways that climate change-fueled extinction is already playing out is through what ecologists call mismatch or mistiming. This is the process whereby warming causes animals to fall out of step with the critical food source, particularly at breeding times, when a failure to find enough food can lead to rapid population losses. The migration patterns of many songbird species, for instance, have evolved over millennia so that eggs hatch precisely when food sources, such as caterpillars, are at the most abundant, providing parents with ample nourishment for their hungry young. But because spring now often arrives early, the caterpillars are hatching earlier too, which means that some areas, that they are less plentiful when the chicks hatch, with a number of possible long-term impacts on survival. Scientists are studying cases of climate-related mistiming among dozens of species, from Arctic terns to pied flycatchers. But there is one important species that they are missing: us homo sapiens. We too are suffering from terrible case of climate-related mistiming. Our problem is that the climate crisis has hatched in our laps at the moment in history when political and social conditions were unequally hostile to problems of this nature and magnitude, the moment being the tail end of the Go-Go '80s, the blast of Off Point from the Crusades to spread deregulated capitalism around the world. Climate change is a collective problem demanding collective action on a scale that humanity has never actually accomplished. Yet, it entered mainstream consciousness in the midst of an ecological war being waged on this very idea of the collective fear. This deeply unfortunate mistiming has created all sorts of barriers to our ability to respond effectively to the crisis. It has meant that corporate powers was ascended at the very moment when we needed to exert unprecedented controls over corporate behavior in order to protect life on Earth. It has meant that regulation was a dirty word, just when it needed those powers most. It has meant that we are ruled by a class of politicians who know only how to dismantle and starve public intentions just when they most need to be fortified. And it has meant that we are saddled with free-trade deals that tie the hands of our policymakers just when they need. Thank you for your time.
Alex Mazzar?
Hello.
Hello, my name is Alex, and I'm here with the Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it at the December tenth meeting, following the December sixth Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. "In Paris, our governments agreed to a goal of keeping warming below two degrees Celsius while pursuing efforts to limit the temperature increase to 1.5 degrees Celsius. What we cannot do, under any circumstances, is precisely what the fossil fuel industry is determined to do and what our government is so intent on helping them do: dig new coal mines, open new fracking fields, and sink new offshore drilling rigs. All that needs to stay in the ground. What we must instead do is clear: carefully wind down existing fossil fuel projects at the same time as we rapidly ramp up renewables until we get global emissions down to zero by mid-century. The good news is that we can do it with existing technologies. The good news is that we can create millions of well-paying jobs around the world in the shift to a post-carbon economy, in renewables, in public transit, in efficiency, in retrofits, in cleaning up polluted land and water. The better news is that as we transform how we generate energy, how we move ourselves around, how we grow our food and how we live in cities, we have a historic opportunity to build a society that is fairer on every front and where everyone is valued. Here's how we do it: we make sure that, wherever possible, our renewable energy comes from community-controlled providers and cooperatives, so that decisions about land use are made democratically, and profits from energy production are used to pay for much-needed services. We know that our reliance on dirty energy over the past couple hundred years has taken its highest toll on the poorest and most vulnerable people, overwhelmingly people of color, many indigenous. That's whose lands have been stolen and poisoned by mining, and its poor urban communities who get the most polluting refineries and power plants in their neighborhoods. So we can and must insist that indigenous and other frontline communities be first-in-line to receive public funds to own and control their own green energy projects, with the jobs, profits, and skills staying in those communities. This has been a central demand of the climate justice movement, led by communities of color. This is already starting to happen on an ad hoc basis. But too often, it is left to already unrefunded communities to raise the finances. That is upside down. Climate justice means those communities are owed public funds as a drop in the ocean of reparation. Climate justice also means that workers in high-carbon sectors, many of whom have sacrificed their health in coal mines and oil refineries, must be full and democratic participants in this justice-based transition. The guiding principle must be "no worker left behind." The bottom line is this: as we get clean, we have got to get fair. More than that, as we get clean, we can begin to redress the founding crimes of our nations: land theft, genocide, slavery. Thank you for your time.
Isaac Ajay Ophori.
Hi, my name is Isaac Ajay Ophori, and I am here with the Sunrise Movement. My comment today is to ask that you pass the climate emergency resolution that Sunrise has presented as written and vote on it on December tenth at the meeting, following the December sixth Asheville climate strike. This is a passage from Naomi Klein's book, On Fire, to convey the urgency of this vote. "In this time between elections, it is worth thinking about how to make absolutely sure the next time all our movements go all the way. A big part of the answer is keeping it up, keep building that yes. But take it even further: outside of the heat of a campaign, there's more time to deepen the relationship between issues and movements, so that our solutions address multiple crises at once. In all our countries, we can and must do more to connect the dots between economic injustice, racial injustice, and gender injustice. We need to understand and explain how all those ugly systems that place one group in a position of dominance over another based on skin color, religious faith, gender, and sexual orientation consistently serve the interests of power and money it always have. They do it to keep us divided and keeping themselves in power. And we have to do more to keep it in front of mind that we are in a state of climate emergency, the roots of which are found in the same system of bottomless greed that underlies our economic emergency. But states of emergency, let's recall, can be catalysts for deep progressive victories. So let's draw out the connections between the gig economy, which treats human beings like a raw resource from which to extract wealth and then discard, and the dig economy, in which the extractive companies treat the earth with the very same disdain. And let's show exactly how we can make move from the gig and dig economy to a society based on principles of care and repair, where the work of our caregivers and of our land and water protectors is respected and valued, a world where no one and nowhere is thrown away, whether in firetrap housing estates or in hurricane-ravaged islands. Because as we rapidly transition off fossil fuels, we cannot replicate the wealth concentration and injustices of the oil and coal economy, in which hundreds of billions in profits have been privatized and the tremendous risks are socialized. We can and must design a system in which the polluters pay a very large share of the cost of transitioning. Thank you for your time."
Is there anyone else wishing to speak who hasn't yet spoken already and who wishes to speak on something that was not on the agenda? Yes?
I surrender my time to a youth that maybe would like to finish their statements.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, we have... Oh.
I just wanted to make one good news story here prior to us breaking. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to participate in a tree planting with Asheville Green Works at Estes Elementary School. We put ten very large, I was told each of these trees were about a thousand pounds, around the parking lot as well as around their playground. It was a wonderful opportunity. All 700 kids got to come out, help us plant them. We had a great education about the importance of trees, their impact, obviously, on the environment, on people's health, and, you know, this is stemming from the Symposium on Climate Change that I think many of us attended, last week or two weeks ago. It was a wonderful opportunity, and I hope we see more of that in the Asheville area. It really brought home to me the opportunities that we have in this wonderful city to, I think, have a direct impact on the environment, to beautify our area, to deal with some of the stormwater issues that we're having. And I'm hopeful that regardless of where anybody lines up on the issue of a resolution or whatever comes before us, that we can all agree to go out and plant as many trees as we can as quickly as possible, and I hope all of us around this city rally around that in the coming months and in the coming years.
And that's an effort by Asheville Green Works, which will continue.
Yes.
Anyone else? I mean, we do have a closed session, so we'll have a closed session motion.
Well, I would like to start by just expressing my support for a climate emergency resolution coming to council agenda on December the tenth, and wondering if that will be addressed at all at this point, or... But I for one support that.
Yeah, we did receive this afternoon an email from Sunrise with the latest iteration of the proposed resolution and a statement that there is an impasse in communications with the city's Sustainability Committee, SACE. And so, I did talk to the chair, or I did talk to the, I don't know if John Noor's position on SACE is...
Past chair.
Past chair, as well, and he was a little bit surprised that, because he had talked to Ashley earlier this week and thought there was a plan to get back together and have more discussion. But, and I know, Brian, you and I talked about, hopefully, there can be some coming together of the resolution with SACE, but I'm not sure yet where that stands, since we just got that information this afternoon.
I think it's fair to say from my conversations with John that SACE continues to be open to discussions and would love for this resolution to work its way through our regular process, and that there would be a resolution that would come to council from SACE with SACE's support.
I will offer that. I personally have read the resolution several times now, and I have tried to figure out a way to make it fit, because it is a template resolution. It is not tailored to Asheville. It is just a template resolution. So I've tried to figure out how we can make it fit for Asheville, in particular, a city in North Carolina, because some of what it speaks to, cities in North Carolina don't do. But I remain hopeful that there's going to be a way to do that. I am a little bit disappointed that the resolution doesn't have, it has a lot of administrative actions, meetings within departments, department planning, and things like that. It does not specifically call for further funding of our own environmental plan that we have already adopted as a city, and so I wonder if there might be a way to think about how we could grow our own planning that we already have and continue to flesh that out. I draw a parallel to, say, for example, the Transit Master Plan, which has a step-by-step, calls for a step-by-step process, and it's really a matter of funding it and getting the push to get the next thing done. So I wonder if there's a way for us to look, and I know Councilman Young has suggested some things that he'd like to see done. We've had a lot of talk around, for example, well, just different funding needs to further put dollars behind the action needed on our own planning. So... This isn't really supposed to be... But I will be here if you want to talk about it afterwards, but I just say all that to say that I am hopeful that we can figure out a way to make this work, because it certainly should not be adversarial. I think we're, we as a city have tried to be one of the most, if not the most, progressive city in the state of North Carolina in terms of movement on climate. And I'm sad to hear, I mean, I'm sad to hear that I know that it's not fast enough, and I want to know what we can do as a city to be more aggressive in getting to these goals. And I think that the more we have disagreement and divisiveness, we're not doing ourselves any favors in terms of getting there. So I would look for opportunities for us to come together and have agreement around the next steps we need to take. Anybody else? Okay, we have a closed session motion. I'll be glad to talk to you as soon as this is over.
I'm of the Asheville City Council going to closed session for the following reasons: to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statute 143-31810E. To consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including but not limited to the handling of settlement of claim regarding the following: Mayfair Partners LLC versus Asheville, and Gwen Alexander versus Asheville. The statutory authorization is contained in North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will adjourn from the closed session.